I'm Watertown, D E C. Watertown is the headquarters for Region 6 and certainly Utica is part of our region. Welcome to the fourth of four public meetings on the New York State Department of Transportation and Environmental Conservation's draft amendment of the 1996 Remsen Lake Placid travel corridor. The draft U M P amendment is also a draft supplement environmental impact statement and draft river area plans for the main branch Serenac River, main branch Racket River, middle branch Moose River, and north branch Moose River. As such, meetings are also considered public hearing pursuant to an in compliance with the requirements of state environmental quality review and wild scenic and recreational regulations, thus the legal needs for these meetings. A final schedule for this project was released on October 22nd, 2019. And I want to point out that what we are proposing is the draft U M P. It is not a compromise. It is what we, D O T, D E C, and New York State consider the best, most effective, and economically beneficial use of the corridor. An 85-mile scenic railroad south of Tupper Lake passing through some of the most remote, pristine, and picturesque parts of the Adirondack, providing one of the longest and best scenic train experiences in the country. An off-season, multi-use recreational trail north of Tupper Lake connecting the Tri-Lakes community and providing a variety of recreational opportunities for visitors and residents of all buildings. This proposal will bring the most economic benefit to the communities along the corridor. Now, clearly, many municipalities along the corridor that have passed resolutions supporting this. Some things have happened since we last came together. The Adirondack Park Agency amended the travel corridor definition. New York State purchased the parcels in the corridor near North Country Community College. We have an access agreement with the Lake Placid North Historic Society, allowing the public to access their parcel at the end of the northern terminus of the corridor. A draft historic preservation plan has been developed, as have a logo and branding statement. The latter are appendices of the draft U M P amendment. And we ask that you review these documents and provide comment on them, as well as the proposals in the draft U M P amendment. Now, we have a simple agenda tonight. Before I introduce our presenters, I just need you to know that a presentation with an overview of our proposal, followed by a public comment period, where we do want to hear from you. So when you signed in, you gave a name, and you put a mark by your name, and I'll be reading those names, and we have a mic to pass. You need to put your name on the comment, on the comment sheet to make a comment. If you cannot fit your comments into three minutes, you can submit them in writing via mail or email. Deadline for comments is close of business on Wednesday, January 8th. And we do have a timer, so you need to look for a sheet of paper that will hold up. That will give you a notice of one minute, 30 seconds, and to wrap up. Contact information, including where to view and download the draft U M P amendment and appendices, are on the sign-in tables. You're welcome to pick up this little square sheets of paper. Comments are given equal consideration whether received here tonight, by mail, or by email. Now, I'd like to introduce you to our presenters. In addition to Reeve Kinderman from Senator Greco's office, he is here with us today. The senator is at the Capitol. We want to thank the senator for adding this fourth meeting to our schedule. Now, I'd like to introduce you to Wendell Lupe from D O T and Randy Young. Randall Young is our regional director at D E C out of Watertown, and they will be doing the presentation tonight, and then we'll get to the comment period.
Good evening. My name is Wendell Lupe. I'm the regional director for the New York State Department of Transportation, Region 2, which is the Mohawk Valley region. As far as the Adirondack Park, we cover the course of the Adirondack Park that runs from Fulton, Hamilton, Perkomer, and United Counties. As an agency, the Department of Transportation will be responsible for oversight of the rail portion of the Remsen Lake Placid corridor, specifically as proposed from Remsen to Tupper Lake. As an overview, the Remsen Lake Placid travel corridor is 119 miles long, beginning in Remsen, United County, passing through Perkomer, St. Lawrence, Franklin Counties, terminating in Lake Placid, Essex County. Use of the travel corridor is governed by our unit management plan, U M P. U M P identifies opportunities for public use consistent with the classification of protected lands. U M P considers the ability of the resources and ecosystems to accommodate such use. Currently, the 119-mile corridor is a designated railroad right-of-way. Constructed in 1892, the line was operated continuously until 1972. In 1974, the corridor was purchased by New York State. The state authorizes use of the corridor through two revocable use-in-activity permits: the Adirondack Railway Preservation Society, and permit is effective from May 1st through November 30th, and the New York State Snowmobile Association from December 1st to April 30th. The scope of work as proposed in the amended U M P is as follows: From Big Moose to Tupper Lake, rehabilitate 45 miles of track from Big Moose to Tupper Lake. Rehabilitate and construct sidings with accessible platforms of Sabatys and Beaver Rivers. From Tupper Lake to Lake Placid, construct a new 34-mile trail from Tupper Lake to Lake Placid. Construct shared parking facilities at Tupper Lake in connection to existing Tupper Lake Trail. Construct new emergency access for the town of Tupper Lake. Rail service and rail-trail junction in Tupper Lake will reimagine Tupper Lake to serve as a terminus for rail and a gateway for a new multi-use trail. Establish a new platform with canopy for rail service. Reconfigure rail to minimize footprint and provide separation for trail construction. Install smaller train maintenance facility and storage track to connect rail service and rail-trails to the depot. For the Tupper Lake South segment, the following are proposed: Track structure rehabilitated for rail operations. From Big Moose South, tying ballast replacement is necessary. From Big Moose North, rehabilitation of tracks through Tupper Lake. No physical alterations of passengers, stations, bridges, miscellaneous structures, which preserves the listed features, feeling, and the character of the corridor. Railcar improvements, independent of the U M P, include railcar rehabilitation and acquisition of destroyed dome car. Dome car, as depicted in this slide, was built in 1955. The Union Pacific, number 9, filed for the one. It's been acquired by the Adirondack Scenic Railroad. It's been refurbished, and was shipped to the Adirondack Scenic Railroad last week. It was expected to arrive in Utica probably sometime this week. Not sure if arrived yet. With respect to improvements, with respect to improvements in Tupper Lake, I'll briefly discuss the improvements before moving to graphics depicting these improvements. Rail service improvements include 550-foot raised passenger platform, passing track conditions and alignment improvements, reconfiguring used radial Y section of the track, storage building or maintenance yard, buffer with vegetation fencing is needed. Rail-trail improvements include trails proposed to run south of the rail grid, got them to join the Town and Village Trails, new parking potential including capacity of snowmobile trailers. General community improvements include access to the Tupper Lake Depot, emergency route detour from Washington Street to the Pride Street. So here's a figure depicting these improvements. A new switch and second track access to Route 3. Extend existing siding and add third track. New platform with canopy between existing siding and new third track. Realign the Y tracks. New maintenance building, a storage yard, and vegetation buffer. Remove existing Y tracks and extension to her rail back to Trail. Connect good trails to existing trails. New added track. Stretch Trail and rail back from here north. New emergency access to the Pride Street to Washington Avenue and the proposed parking Lastly, the improvements of Sabatys and Beaver River will include a new 300-foot split lumber platform to both locations, and creation of a double-ended siding at Sabatys. And I'll turn the presentation over to Randy Young, Department of Wildlife and Conservation.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Well, I will discuss the first slide, and then with another one that's going to come up when I click. So I'll be discussing the portion of the corridor from Tupper Lake to Lake Placid that will be converted into a trail. All ties, rails, railroad equipment will be removed between Tupper Lake and Lake Placid, except rails and ties associated with side tracks and depots, which will be retained for historical interpretive purposes. All historic railroad equipment and signs will be stored and used for future interpretive The 34-mile, multi-use, year-round recreational trail is being proposed will connect the communities of Tupper Lake, Serenac Lake, and Lake Placid. The trail will be constructed 10 feet wide of compacted stone along its full length, I'm sorry, compacted stone dust, I'm sure there's a difference there, with two and a half foot wide shoulders on each side. This is a rendering of the trail at one location, which is Lake Colby. Whatever practical access points will be designed to meet ADA accessibility requirements. Five major access points will be instructed to meet accessibility requirements, and the full length of the trail will meet ADA accessibility requirements. The Tri-Lakes communities see this plan, which we've described as providing significant benefits, both in attracting visitors and improving the quality of life for their residents. The slides depict the current plans and the potential benefits in attracting and improving the quality of life for the residents in these communities. This slide shows some of the examples of three in the middle. They show the relationship between the corridor and the trail networks in the Tri-Lakes communities. Tupper Lake will benefit both from the train and the trail. It's very excited about the potential increase in visitation, particularly in the junction part of the town where the train will meet the trail. Serenac Lake also sees the trail, and the train depot is an important component of the development of the depot street area. Both Serenac Lake and Lake Placid see the trail as being a central component of future The draft U M P also includes a draft historic preservation plan. Discussion on the historic preservation significance, its activities, and the remaining infrastructure of the corridor are included in the plan, along with a description of the adverse impacts of the proposal and actions to mitigate the efforts. The impacts. We're seeking input on the preservation plan during this public comment period. We're also planning a stakeholder meeting with local and regional historic preservation organizations prior to finalizing the preservation plan. The corridor intersects four sections of rivers classified as recreational and two that are classified as scenic under the Wild Scenic and Recreational Rivers Act. As such, the draft U M P S E I S amendment also serves as a draft amendment to the river area management plans for the main branch of the Serenac River, the main branch of the Racket River, the middle branch of the Moose River, and the north branch of Moose Here is the anticipated schedule moving forward. Finalization of the U M P will occur in the spring of 2020. Rail removal and rehabilitation will be completed in the fall of 2020. Trail construction will begin in the spring of 2021 after the rails have been removed. Trail construction will be done in phases with completion of the full length of the trail in 2023. The phases of the trail construction have not yet been determined at this time. Here is the schedule for the public comment period. Tonight is our final public meeting, and we've extended the public comment period to January 8th, as you've heard. The key next steps for the unit management plan process are stakeholder engagement regarding the historic preservation plan, review of the public comments, finalization of the historic preservation plan, a letter of resolution regarding the impacts to the historic features of the rail line, finalization of the U M P amendment with a response to public comments, and presentation to the Adirondack Park Agency for review and approval regarding state land master plan compliance. Final U M P amendment will be signature by D E C and D O T commissioners. Thank you. Here's the contact information for submitting public comments. Remember the deadline, as we've said before, it's January 8th, 2020. And now I'll turn the meeting back over to Andrea Pedder. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to get to the meeting table, where we want to hear from you and the audience. And when you signed in, you were asked if you wanted to speak. We have note takers and a microphone that we will bring to you. The first person is Jim McCollum.
Yeah, I'm Jim McCollum in Lake Placid. Basically, I do agree with the trail portion between Lake Placid and Tupper Lake. But I really think we need to take a long, hard look before we do any more rail improvements. We've been going at this now for, since 1995. The state has been pouring money into this corridor. We're looking at around $30 million so far, another $30 million, $31 million for this extension for 85 miles of rail, that we have no idea whether it'll be economically successful or not. The last study done by Stone Consulting for the Adirondack Scenic Railroad said best-case scenario, there'd be 7,000 new riders if the train went to Lake Placid. With this current incarnation of the plan, we're talking about $5,000 per rider. That's an astronomical amount of money. We have no idea if this is the best economic plan, because we really have not done the studies of what will happen when e-bikes take over. Will people even want to ride a train when we have cars that are driving themselves that are coming quickly? You know, we get this pretty picture of the dome car and, you know, act like that's going to be the savior for the railroad. Well, you know, what are you going to have, a locomotive and one dome car towing behind it? You know, I just read Amtrak in August, got rid of their dome car that runs between Albany and Montreal. They said it wasn't worth it and be a bunch of repairs to run, so they got rid of it. We talk about the Saratoga North Pre-Carero, they had a dome car. The Capital District has over a million people in the, in the area. They went out of business. Okay? We cannot rely on just wishful thinking whether this is going to be worth spending $31 million in tax dollars. It's just not there. And I'm a little disappointed here that we had to come to Utica, because quite frankly, this trail plan really has nothing to do with Utica. Nothing will change for Utica. And I would say Utica would be smarter to get on the trail plan and ask for the tracks to be removed direct, and then they could be part of the entire trail system with the Erie Canal Trail, and then they'd be the hub for that.
If you want to keep your comments to three minutes and watch the board over there, Tony Goodman.
Thank you. I'm Tony Goodman from Keene, and I started on this issue in 1992 as a member of the Citizen Advisory Committee, which was the first step in the preparation of the 1996 unit management plan. Along the way, I've heard a lot of projections of how rail service will be implemented on the corridor. Unfortunately, none of them, or at least almost none of them, have turned out to be true. So I'm here to ask that D O T and D E C take a very hard look at any projections for the expansion of rail service from Big Moose to Tupper Lake. Specifically, the study done by Freight Services Incorporated, as commissioned by the Adirondack North Country Association, envisioned a phase implementation of rail service with projections for each phase. One phase to rehabilitate the tracks to Serenac Lake was to allow equipment moves and then sufficiently improve the tracks between Serenac Lake and Lake Placid to prevent tourist rail operations. The projected cost of rehabilitation was $1.7 million. The actual cost in the end was $7 million. And by the fourth year, this operation between Lake Placid and Serenac Lake was supposed to generate an annual profit of $245,000, with 75 jobs created. The tourist rail operated for 15 years and may be paid for itself. Serenac Lake shopkeepers did report an increase in traffic in their stores when the train was running, but I don't think any of them hired new employees, and I know that nowhere near 75 jobs were created. Another phase proposed by Freight Services Study was an expansion of the rail service to Big Moose. Given that the rail rehabilitation happened nearly 20 years after the original cost projection, this rehab was probably close to the original. However, after four years, that operation was supposed to generate $703,000 in annual revenue, with a net of $69,000, while also creating 46 jobs. For the past two years, however, they've only been tended 12 runs to Big Moose each year. Now, if each run averaged 300 riders and most were adults, the ticket price would have only generated $160,000. And 46 new jobs in Big Moose. The initial projected cost of rehabilitation to from Big Moose to Tupper Lake was $18 million, but I believe it's now increased to $31 million, and with the continuing deterioration of the corridor, that cost could ultimately be higher than that. From the proposed operating capability, it will be a nine-hour round trip. It will cost $67 per person and $200 per family of four. I don't know how many people are going to choose to spend their money and their time that way. I therefore hope that D O T makes sure that they have a projection for a sustainable number of riders, so they don't end up having to subsidize a money-losing operation just to save the initial investment.
Well, good evening, everyone. I had a speech made, but I'm going to change it up a little bit. I agree with Jim. I own Charlie's Inn Junction Campground Lake Clear in New York, who are right on, I own one of the most beautiful train stations that there is, and I want the trail. And I agree with Jim with what does this have to do with Utica? This trail that's going to run from Tupper Lake to Lake Placid is going to be a four-season trail. The tracks, we have so many accidents and people get hurt. We can't groom. You guys are already riding down here right now. It's wonderful to see. I think it's great. With the tracks out, we can start our season when you guys start your season down here. And the high peaks, hiking problems that they have on this trail would alleviate a lot of issues with that. It's two grades, an entire two-to-three grade, entire distance of the trail. You could walk it, bike it, hike it, cross-country skating camp, and it'll connect Fish Creek, Rollins Pond to our local communities. They'll be able to ride right out of those campsites and campgrounds. And I'm just pro-trail, and I appreciate all the work from the D O T, D E C, A P A engineers, everybody that's worked on this, and let's go.
Good evening. My name's David Corr, and I live just outside of Utica, but I have land and snowmobile trails on in two places in the Adirondacks, and are welcome to it. But I am opposed to this particular plan. I want to say according to the Adirondack Scenic Railroad, there was seriously misled in recent negotiations, according to Bill Branson. If the state wants to through the corridor, they keep it with D O T and honor the commitments for the financial support that was not given over the years. Restore the full line to Lake Placid, preserve this rail line that is on the National and New York State Historical Registry. The corridor narrows down to as little as 60 feet as most, but is mostly 100 feet wide, in many places 200 feet wide. We can have a walking trail and a snowmobile trail if there is the political will to do so. We can have both. Millions of dollars hit will have to be repaid to reimburse the federal government for the past payers if the tracks are torn up, not to mention the direct cost involved in tearing them up. And by the way, how much is the hazmat cost coming from tearing up this railroad? There are 30 miles when it's been there for 100 years. If this is such a good plan, then why get the corridor or the D E C? And where is our money coming from? Some of this stuff goes out to 2023. Are we sure that money's going to be there? There are over 800 miles of Town and County trails and snowmobile trails in the Adirondacks now, but it doesn't count the counties and town roads, lakes, et cetera. Once D O T gets up control of the land, the D E C, I believe it will be subject to the A P A rules, and I think that any motorized use, snowmobiling, or anything else will not be able to reverse the many wilderness areas or scenic rivers in the future. I'm very confident that sooner or later, those sections will be put in the forest preserve now under a corridor, or in the future. Eventually, it will not allow any motorized use. This maintenance for bridges, trestles, and other non-conforming structures under the A P A master plan will not be allowed, as well as different types of maintenance. It'll take only one lawsuit under the current rules, and I believe it will be finished. I appeal to the sporting community and others to support the continuation of the railroad through Lake Placid, to save our seniors, disabled, future generations. I would hope that we could preserve our heritage and save the whole railroad.
I'm Vince Barata, and I am a member of the Board of Directors for the Adirondack Scenic Railroad, and I speak for the entire board. I know I do not see a lot of familiar faces tonight, and the reason for that is that we are running in the middle of Polar Express. There are 1,200 passengers riding on Polar Express almost every night of the weekends from mid-November up until the 23rd of December. There are 1,200 passengers tonight, and many, many of our volunteers are there, seeing that those passengers have a good experience. We, the, our Board of Directors, disagree with ripping up the rails and replacing them with a recreational trail from Tupper to Placid as proposed in the draft amendment of the 96 Remsen Lake Placid Corridor Unit Management Plan. Claims abound referring to hefty economic benefit of a proposed trail. We find this highly questionable. This trail will be through wilderness areas over distances that will probably not be attractive to very young people and the elderly. In fact, in our successful lawsuit of 2017, we uncovered a report by a New York State hired consultant that stated that the replacement of the rails with a trail will not add significant tourist revenue to the local economy. That can be found in the judge's comments. Contrast that to the last two seasons of the A S R running rail bikes and excursion trains, we brought over 40,000 tourists a year to the tri-towns area. You can be sure that generated significant revenue. Imagine the economic benefit, and there is... there is an economic benefit to Utica. Don't mistake that, okay? Try getting a hotel room in Utica when Polar Express is running, when fall foliage trades are running. Land acquisition is still an issue. The state does not have title. There is reversionary rights. I'll come closing up. We have issues with the historic preservation and mitigation plan. And in summary, redefining the travel corridor, minimizing land acquisition, and repeating an inadequate by the judge's ruling, historic mitigation looks like an attempt to end-run around Judge Main's 2017 decision to nullify the 2016 Unit Management Plan. Thank you.
Hello. I attended the last railroad hearing held up at Old Forge, and I was really surprised and disappointed by the reaction from the NYSSA and their acquisition of keeping the railroad from Big Moose to Tucker Lake. We've been using this corridor trail for well over 40 years as the only way to connect the north with the south. I started selling snowmobiles in 1964, and in 1968, we took those speedos, and '72, we had our hats. And I helped Bab Hall up at Old Forge organize the snowyoke in the early '70s and was a snowmobile safety instructor. And I also served on the Governor's Snowmobile Advisory Council, and I've been a member of several snowmobile clubs. There's no one in this room that's more involved in snowmobile than I am. That's why I'm so concerned that some of the snowmobile community is so adamant about tearing up the tracks. It was a brilliant move by Arda, the Adirondack Mountain Club, Protect the Adirondacks, and the other environmental communities to solicit the snowmobile community, and their effort to shut down the railroad. The railroad runs through four wilderness areas from Big Moose to Tucker Lake, and when those tracks are removed, it's no longer a railroad corridor. At that point, it'll be closed. You won't even be able to ride a mountain bike because you cannot use a mechanicalized vehicle in a wilderness area. When these environmental groups wanted to expand and improve snowmobile trails, it should wave the red flag to the snowmobile community because they hate snowmobiles. So, keep the tracks. We can't go back.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Okay, first, I own a snowmobile, but I am the president of the Utica and Mohawk Valley Chapter of the National Railway Historical Society. Our organization held permits in 1992 and 1993 to operate the Adirondack and Tennyer Railroad, a small segment of railroad. And what I'm going to read here is a position statement. The Utica and Mohawk Valley Chapter, the National Railway Historical Society, is a nonprofit educational historical society. It is committed to the preservation of railroad history and the promotion of rail transportation. Our organization was one of the proponents of the corridor being put on the state and national historic register. To that end, our organization operated the Adirondack and Tennyer Railroad under permit in 1992 and 1993. We see ourselves as an involved party with the ongoing discussions to change the management plan. The chapter opposes any amendment that remove, that will remove rail infrastructure from the corridor. We favor the continuation of a multi-use travel corridor. Allow rail use over the entire length of the corridor and encourage compatible trail uses. The fact that adjacent trail construction would cost less with the rail removed is not a valid argument for the best use of this asset. We remain committed to the 1996 plan to secure and maintain the travel corridor as a safe, multipurpose, and environmentally and historically self-improvement of the state's infrastructure. I just want to add here that we are going through some evolution here with this new green movement. I own a snowmobile, and it's a, you know, it's a Polaris Indy 500 CC motor, and I'm afraid the snowmobiles are going to get targeted in the next decade or two, right now like they're after flatulating clouds and everything else that they seem to be concerned about. So, I think we need all to work together between bulging steel locomotives, bulging diesel locomotives, and snowmobiles. Let's do this together, make a compatible corridor out of this. I yield my thanks.
Thank you. I wasn't aware that it was only going to be three minutes, so I'm going to submit my comments online, but I do want to say, just remember, you know, when you make a decision to take something out that's been there 100 years, it'll never come back. We don't have to do this. There are ways to compromise, and there are ways that everybody can win. I was an avid downhill skier most of my life due to my age. I just turned 70, and wear and tear of my body. I can't ski anymore, but I can tell you, I used to live in Connecticut. And boy, if I ever saw an opportunity where I could have come from Connecticut and gotten on the train at Grand Central, come off the Hudson on the Railroad State at the Hotel Utica, and then taken a train ride with my family all the way up through the Adirondacks to Lake Placid, and I have skied there and stayed for a week, how much money do you think we're going to spend? Phenomenal. Tourism possibilities are boundless on all sides, and if you tear up those tracks once they're gone, you're gone.
Hey, I'm Scott Thompson from Beaver River, and we're passing around some victories here. Snowmobiles covering the yard. And it's not been unusual when the rails are covered that we're easily able to serve over 300 people a day. And not too many years ago, they had travel counters on the corridor, and as soon as the rails were covered, the travel went up to 400-plus passes a day in places like Sabates that are pretty remote. And, you know, we've seen from actually before the railroad was gone, before the operation of railroad was gone, the snowmobiles started using the corridor, and the snowmobiles have grown and grown and grown until there's really no end to the amount of winter activity, but it's really girded by the amount of time that the rails are covered in the winter. The snowmobiles have created and maintained their own access, and the railroad is painted out on its own. Nobody threw it out. So, you know, we have the only business between Big Moose and Tucker Lake on the rail corridor. We're 75 feet away from the rails and just have not been able to figure out a way that we could make use of the train operation. And we certainly can see what we can do with the snowmobiles. And now with the advent of e-bikes, the nature of recreational travel is set again to jump tremendously. The e-bike sales are over 25% a year in growth, and so we think that this is maybe the next snowmobile thing, maybe bigger than the snowmobiles, if they have a place to go. And that's really pretty much, you know, our position in having the trains.
Good evening. I'm a 19-year rail trail bicyclist in favor of the rail trail from Lake Placid to Big Moose Station. I want to talk about some misconceptions of rail trails. When the rails are gone, they're gone for a primary purpose of a rail trail is to preserve the rail bed and its right-of-way, but it may be used for some purchase other than a rail trail if needed. You cannot economically revert to a railroad in the future without a preserved rail bed or right-of-way. Next misconception, the rail trail will be difficult and costly to maintain. Every man-made structure needs maintenance. A rail trail can use equipment used to repair roads, which is commonly available locally. Railroad repair equipment is specialized and usually comes from sources other than local. Keep the maintenance money in the Adirondacks. DCE's, VSA groups can do a lot of small maintenance and caretaking for free. Railroad is needed to transport persons with disabilities to see this section of the Adirondacks. On the George S. Mcison Trail, the back hills of South Dakota, the running motorized problem, similar to the ones used in Lake Placid, just for disabled people. I was riding the Pine Creek Trail in Pennsylvania when I encountered a woman on one of those motorized chairs for the disabled. The big smile on her face was inspiring and awesome. Rail bikes are needed for families that do not want to buy bicycles and want to view the scenes along the railroad. Four-person bicycles are already made and can be rented by local businesses to families that want to travel the rail trail without being on a rigid schedule. Along the railroad, there will be a world-class contraption. George S. Mcison Trail, 109,000 mile rail trail, has a successful spur, scenic railroad of 20 miles. Most scenic railroads know that shorter is less offensive to run and lowers the price per trip to the customer. Senior citizens prefer using a railroad over a rail trail to see the Adirondacks. Senior citizens are living longer and healthier lives. They're able to exercise and be more physically active than ever before. Medical technology like knee and heat hip replacements allow them to enjoy recreation like bicycles. I'm writing the trail of the Hiawatha and the Vidaroot Mountains of Idaho, and I keep seeing some seniors coming at me on the trail. My wife and I bicycle in the fall. We see plenty of seniors on rail trails, spending money and enjoying their retirements in a healthy fashion, and I resent the fact that the ASR insinuates that old people need their help. Next fix. Next best thing, as two people already mentioned, e-bicycles. Tourism areas are always looking for the next big thing. The possibility of e-bicycles, e-tricycles, and e-quadriceps are maybe the next big thing.
Thank you, Neil Bird. I have a camp up in the Adirondacks. First off, this is Channel 2 here tonight. Yes, you know, Lori, well, the rest of you, stars, please make sure you get your stories straight tonight. Listen, the Old Forge one, and you guys are a little bit swayed with the details you put out, so make your comments correct, make them accurate, and understand that rail supporters do not condone the current plan. We condone ripping up the rails from Old Forge all the way to Lake Placid, number one, all right? So, make that clear to everybody. Second, lots of merit tactics. Marcel already covered that. Once we pull up the rails, we're going to lose the travel corridor. It's already been stated, it's a travel corridor. It will remain a travel corridor forever, all right? You can pull the rails up, it's done. You can still have it. The provisions are in it to make sure that we have rail when we need it when it comes back. So, it's not an issue there, all right? I also read the Bergen Report, which kind of goes into the ASR's maintenance facility. Bergen Report says that when he did review, most of the coves were plugged by beavers, yet the DOT report doesn't reflect that. Everything is okay. Here we are. Only a week ago, a week ago, we've got coves already plugged north of Tucker again. So, what's the DOT doing today? We're doing emergency repairs. How much does that cost? Doesn't the ASR get money every year to maintain the travel corridor? Every year? What do they do with that money? Do you want to leave that in charge going forward to maintain this trail? My stance, rip up the rails. Old Forge, Lake Placid. Clear? Good.
My name's Dan Drewan. I'm a regional board member for the New York State Horse Council. I'm also Trail Committee Chairman for the New York State Horse Council and a member of the New York State Trail Council. The horse industry in New York State is about $3 billion a year. There's a lot of money in horses. They don't, they don't bother you at all. Most, you don't even see them. We'd like to have horses added to this supposedly multi-use trail. Multi means more than two, more than three. There are three users allowed: snowmobiles, pedestrians, bicycles. We're done. Add horses. You don't have to do anything different to the trail. Add, let us ride. Okay? We will bring our horses, and we will bring money, and we will spend it, okay? Some people are concerned about meeting horses on trails and what would happen. Let me tell you a story about my life, myself, and my dog. We're walking on one of the trails locally, and all of a sudden, we're moving along quietly, minding our own business, and this thing goes zooming by us out of nowhere. What did we do? We jumped. We were startled. My dog jumped. She was startled. What was it? Oh, it's just a guy had a bicycle. No big deal. We had something happen a couple minutes later, though. Another bicycle came up behind us. That one has a little horn on it. Beep, beep, beep. We looked backwards. Oh, look, it's a bicycle. We told the dog, "Not a problem. Stay with us." Dog says, "Fine." We walk on, the bicycle goes by, and life is wonderful. That's how my horse will react, exactly the same way. You startle, he'll be startled. You come up and behave civilly, we'll be fine. The National Parks has a plan. This is what they have in video. I've linked, sent a link to DEC about it. New York State Horse Council will happily make up signs like this that show how trails, how people should meet on trails. We will include DOT, parks, and DEC locals if you'd like. And we'll give them to you so you can put them up at the trailheads and at the trail meetings. We're fine with that, okay? Please, put the trails in, include horses as permitted users. Also, we stand with the Snowmobile Association and their plan for how they would like to see the trails going forward. Thank you.
My, I am Spike Flair. I live in South Bend, Barrow, and I have a camp in the Adirondacks. We've been going there since I was just a little kid, and I didn't prepare anything. I just wanted to come and speak my mind correctly. And just say, I've been riding that rail corridor since I was, you know, five years old, on the front of a snowmobile with my father, and I can't tell you how many times we either come up on or somebody in our group would break an AR, break a ski, go flying over the handlebars because of the rails were still in place. And you can say all you want to people, you know, when you can have a trail alongside or whatever. I don't think the infrastructure's there. There's, there's plenty of people that have gone out and done the research there to determine it, the folks at the DOT and DEC and all of us. But, but then, if nothing, for nothing else, you need to understand the safety aspect there, that you cannot ride those rails safely without proper snow cover, without heavy incident. I have to go, if I want to go to my camp right now, like today, you know, Tuck Hill's got snow, Ford's got snow, we've got snow. If those, those rails weren't in place, I'd be able to hop on my sled rig in my backyard and, and ride right up to my camp in the Adirondacks, no problem. Now, I'm putting fuel in my truck. I'm loading everything up. I've got to buy a trailer just to be able to get up to my camp in the Adirondacks. We ride the Charlies, we ride the Georgia Walk, we ride all these businesses, and we spend a lot of money. And I can't do that right now because I'm stuck. I'm stuck in Barrow because I gotta have a trailer or I gotta have something like that. So, anyways, don't need to take up any more time, but those rails need to go.
I'm a member of the New York State Horse Council. I'm a horse rider, and I, like Dan said about it, there are rules on there are rules on the road for horses on the trail. It takes a little bit of consideration to share a trail, whether you're walking, riding on bike, riding a horse, or a snowmobile. So I'm in support of development of the trail and the taking up of the tracks to make it more available for more routes for people to use. Thank you.
Steve Davis.
Ah, yes, Steve Davis, I was involved in the travel industry for about 20 years. And one of the destinations we would sell trips to would be Lake Placid. And they were always very popular. And I have nothing against Tupper Lake, but if we tried to sell a tour group to go to Tupper Lake, we're startled to death. No, I don't. Tupper Lake is not a destination. I can't see the railroad being able to make money if you only go to Tupper Lake. If you went to Lake Placid, there would be something you could sell. And I was involved in many aspects of this, including sales, promotion, and one thing or another. And Lake Placid, it didn't take much promotion to convince people that that would be a destination they want to go to. And on a semi-related subject, the Lackawanna tracks used to run through my property. I have quite a few acres. And there was never any problem. And when snowmobiles first came around, there would be lines, you know, they would go through 20 or 30 in a row. And it's gradually petered out. The rails are gone now and the number of riders continues to diminish. We, I live in a little town, we had four snowmobile dealers, and now we have none. And, you know, we've got a lot of snow on my property and the trail is open and I haven't seen a single snowmobile yet this year. And I also have a large syrup operation and it's visible from, right away from the railroad. When the railroad went through there, I never had any problems. Once the tracks were taken up, I had nothing but vandalism. And my insurance carrier won't honor any claims I have on my maple operation down there anymore. You know, this is, you know, I've seen this from all different aspects, you know, and I can't see taking the trail, the tracks up at all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Howard Nathan. I live here in central New York in Clinton. I'm an avid snowmobiler and also oddly enough, I am a rail historian. My sons and my wife and I have ridden every historic steam train east of the Mississippi. We've been on the Essex Steam Train and River Ride. We've been on the White Mountain Cod Railway multiple times and every other historic steam railway in the Northeast. I love trains. I had a 30-foot room full of train tracks and compass engines when my kids were young. We're not trying to stop the Adirondack Scenic Railway from riding from Utica to Fendera. And anyone who thinks otherwise is absolutely wrong. The thing that has to be stated here clearly is snowmobilers and Adirondack businesspeople are in favor of removing the rails from the Big Moose Station all the way to Lake Placid. The snowmobile clubs in Lake Placid and Tupper have been decking over the rails for several years now because they want the sleds to come into their towns and spend money. Snowmobiles are a billion-dollar business in this country and over a million dollars every season spent just here in central and northern New York. I speak to this through fact because I process credit cards for the town of Webb, for the New York State Snowmobile Association. More than 50% of the bars, restaurants, and retailers up there. I see the numbers. This is the condition of the rails. In more than six places this year, once you go past Big Moose Station and head towards Tupper, culverts completely washed out, culverts blocked up by beaver dams, by trees, and yet, D.O.T. has paid hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to the Adirondack Scenic Railway to maintain this corridor. I have a half a dozen friends in the 15 years I've lived up here who've had their sleds totaled because the skidoo front end is just the right size to catch the welding plates between the tracks that are misaligned and rotting away. The tracks need to go north of, because they couldn't even clear the tracks this year because of the wind and rain that we had, there were so many trees down. This is this week on this trail area that we're talking about. They want to spend $31 million to renovate the tracks and they say it's going to be an economic impact beneficial to who? The snowmobilers spend money. They save the residents of all abilities. The snowmobile is the only production manufactured vehicle in the United States today that comes out of the factory, handicapped, accessible with hand controls for accelerating and brakes. You can't do that with a motorcycle because if you don't have the use of your legs, you can't ride it. But I have six members in my club who are wheelchair-bound and they ride snowmobiles. So for residents of all abilities, you might notice, those of you that know me, I'm not walking so good tonight. I lost the use of my legs this year. I tore tendons in both legs, I was in rigid boots for six months, and I'm just learning to walk again. And I'm really looking forward to snowmobiling. I do 1,500 miles in the Adirondack Park every season. Last year, we got the intersection, Star Lake, Lake Clear, and we were exchanging maps with people from other areas who've gone through it than they ever had before because the tracks were covered with enough snow that we could safely ride. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hal Daygar. I'm a dayger up in Old Forge, hot to a trailside restaurant, um, and that's with the Norridge Walk. You, my parents actually used to tend bar for them years ago. Little history here, one thing that I do want to put out, for anybody that hasn't been to one of these meetings, this is not a question-and-answer meeting. They will not take your questions later. They will not answer your questions later. So if you have something to say, go out there and turn it in on the sheet because I found out the hard way in the Old Forge meeting. Anyways, um, one thing that I have thought about that I talked to some of the people here at the last meeting, if we spend all this money on this train, in 10 years from now, this train doesn't pan out to be, to make, hold its weight in revenue. And we, it falls by the wayside. We lost $30 million to renovate it, all the operating costs to get it going. And then we had this meeting again on whether we pull the rails up or not. That could be a 100% failure in my book. If we pull those tracks out from Big Moose up, it will never be a 100% failure. Somebody is going to use that trail for something. By the way, they're going to walk on it, snowmobile on it, horseback ride on it, fly an airplane down it. Somebody's going to use it for something. It will never be a 100% failure. And those towns along it are going to benefit from it. The gentleman over here was speaking earlier about we have a lot of snowmobile trails in New York State, and we do. But we don't have one like that. Picture New York State without the New York State Thruway. That's what that rail trail will be to many, all seasons, not just snowmobiles, but all seasons. Right now, we get to use those rail tracks one month out of the year, average. Maybe because it takes late February before those tracks sometimes are usable. The thing, 12 months out of the year, people can do whatever they want on that trail. They can walk it, bike it, ride it, whatever. The gentleman that was talking about the Polar Express, I don't think there's one snowmobiler in this room that has a problem with the railroad doing what they do. The Polar Express is a great thing, but it doesn't, Fendera, Big Moose, Tupper Lake has nothing to do with the Polar Express. And, I mean, alright, they may say, well, we can start one out of Tupper. How many do we need? You know, like I said, 12 months a year, we can use it. When I spoke to somebody earlier, they said, I said, why are you pulling it up from Saranac River from Tupper to Lake Placid? They were talking about the amount of people up there over the other area because it's so desolate, and the hikers and all that stuff. One thing I thought about, hikers want to climb mountains. They're not going to walk a straight trail that much. Bicycleists, snowmobiles, snowmobilers, they're going to run a flat trail. That's just a fact. I probably am out of time, but if you haven't got up on the paper, pull them the rails.
Jim Zetka.
Thank you. I'm also recording this live so folks throughout the city and the county and around the area can hear in what is happening here. I'm a former councilman for the city of Utica and I'm actually sick of seeing this room. It's been 10 years we've been talking about this, multiple, multiple public hearings on this issue, and here we are again today. It makes perfect sense to keep these rails going from Utica to Lake Placid. It is an economic development engine. It's eco-tourism. It's done all over the world. It's going to open up the Adirondacks without environmentally affecting much of the Adirondacks because people will be on the train to view and not impacting the Adirondacks, but impacting economics. We passed a resolution, we've been talking about this, like I said, for 10 years. We had a resolution by the common council here in the city of Utica, supporting this as part of our long-term master plan for economic development. The Adirondack railroads proved to us, they've done things that have brought economic development for our area in tourism. We passed multiple resolutions. I've been off the board, board, our council members after me have passed the same type of resolutions. I'm going to be submitting that to the state. The Oneida County Board of Legislators passed similar resolutions. I'm not sure if they passed anything recently, but during the years of our council, we worked together with the Oneida County Board and they passed resolutions and they were unanimous. We had no, no votes by the common council and the county legislators. That's it. Thank you.
Al Dean. Al? Okay. Bill Hutchinson.
Hi there. My name's Bill Hutchinson. I'm from Albany and I have ridden the Adirondack Scenic and I think it's a real treasure and would recommend it to anyone. I can see a way that we should be sharing this asset. I don't, I don't know why, but there's all this animosity between the two groups coming from that area. But I want to say one thing. This is a truly historic railroad that's been there for over 100 years. And as other people say, once it's gone, it's gone. It's your last remaining link to the national rail system. And I'll be real short here and just say that I don't think anybody can really predict what's going to happen in this country 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now. Yeah, right now gasoline is cheap, relatively speaking. What's it going to be like? You know, some event in the world around the world, anything can change. And it just strikes me as being very foolish to throw something away like this. I don't, you know, I have nothing against trails, I think they're wonderful, I'm using myself. If that's what you want to do, that's fine, I don't have any problem with that. I do have a problem with tearing them out needlessly. I think there's ways that can be done to work together on this kind of issue and go for a win-win instead of one over the other. I just don't think that's right. Thank you so much.
Butch Bors?
Butch? Are you speaking?
Butch?
Um, there's two. There's a Butch Bors and a Butch, well, it's not a Butch Butch. Hey, Butch Bors? Okay. It's just so ironic, there's two of the same people. You're next.
Uh, Butch Bors, I also have a camp in Old Forge. I think Mr. Thompson is passing around a picture I took in Norridge Walk from the sky. There had to have been probably 200 sleds there that day. I will tell you, on that day, when my family of five rode up to the Norridge Walk to have a great, um, all-in-the-back experience, my daughter smashed the front of one of our sleds into the back of mine trying to maneuver across the tracks because she was so scared. Nobody injured, it was a great thing, and I'll fix the sled, no big deal. But all because of my child's scaredness, all three of them, of riding those rails because of the dangers of snow. It's ludicrous to think that you're going to have a combined trail of rails and have an avid snowmobile section that can be ridden with a family. You pull the rails, you make a super corridor for the middle of the state, what an economic impact. You talk about the Adirondack Scenic Railroad with 1,200 riders tonight. Did any of them get off the train and spend money in those local economies? I don't think so. If they spend money here in Utica area for the hotels to get on the Polar Express, great, that's awesome. Take them up to Fendera, no problem. But that is not impacting the businesses of Tupper Lake, of the Norridge Walk, Old Forge, Acres. I hear a lot of businesses here. Why? Because snowmobiles and the different entities that can use a four-season trail three months, okay? Horses, what a great, what a great thought. Who missed that? This is a four-season trail. You have to allow people to use it. The benefit of the state public right-of-way to use this as a public entity as opposed to just a singular railroad during the summer is ridiculous. You have all of that economic ability and impact to have all of these folks using that trail. Handicap, white, white squish, the impact to the state right-of-way with the trail, with the rails there, you're putting pre-assault on the ground, all of that impact is already there. To think that you're not impacting that rail system by allowing the public to use it is a silly endeavor. I don't think that you have a sustainable use of the rail system. I'm younger, I have no desire to ride a railroad train. My kids don't have any interest in it. But we ride snowmobiles, 12, 15, 2,000 miles a year. My wife likes for the missing children. She wants to ride that rail, Beaver River, she wants to go to Saranac Lake. She wants to roll all the way to Lake, to Lake Placid. Can't do that with rails. This has to be a corridor for the public. Take the rails out. Adirondack Scenic Railroad has right-of-way all of Fendera, perfect. Move the rails, put a trail.
I'm Butch Butch, who is a lifelong resident of Utica. And I've always put this corner of the ribs of Lake Placid travel corridor right from day one, back in the 80s. This is a global asset. People think of Olympics, but they think of Lake Placid. And one way that many people want to get to Lake Placid is off the rails. And as people have said, if you take them out, you'll never get it back. But it's a huge economic development tool, keep it all the way to Lake Placid. Thank you.
Hey, just to give you a quick update, we've got 13 more people, so we're going to keep going. Mark Young.
My idea is to put a gondola right along railroad tracks all the way to Whiteface. That's it.
Good evening. I'm a longtime resident of New York State. In the 1960s, when I was a lot younger, I used to take the train from western New York to Utica. And I would go to the summer camp out of the Old Forge area for most of the summer. That train got me there. The train used to come all the way from Chicago to place west and would pick up people all the way. And years previous, it would actually go up to Fendera and get people to camp. You can't do that today. Not the way things are going here. I do not think that the Adirondacks needs a seasonal tourist railroad. I think the Adirondacks needs a year-round, multi-use, full-service railroad. You talk about your electric self-driving cars, you're still going to be stuck in traffic whether you're driving or not. You have traffic congestion in the high peaks. You have the campgrounds and the parking areas filling up. And we have a number of things we got to think about here. Okay, the snowmobile people are all very proud of how much money they spend. They talk about all the business they bring in. What the state don't tell you is what the state's own numbers show. Their numbers have been declining since two thousand. Snowmobile club registrations are down. I hear them complaining that they have to wait until February before there's enough snow to ride the track. That should tell you that the weather isn't what it used to be. Now, there's this thing out there called climate change. Do not try and tell me it's a hoax. My son is a Hurricane Hundred. He flies through that weather you claim is all made up. Now, there are a lot of things we could be doing that would be good for the long-term future. I don't see any children in this room and those are the people we really need to be thinking about. There are an estimated three million annual visitors who come to Lake Placid. Seven to ten come to the Adirondacks. As it is, the only way we're going to get here, most of them, is they're going to have to drive. We are pushing for a highway-centered transportation system in the future and it's killing us. The Sierra Club, okay, everybody who, just whatever, points out that in New York State, thirty-six percent of the greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation. You go to Massachusetts, you go to Connecticut, you go to Vermont, they are adding tourist rail, they are adding commuter rail, they are adding transportation of rail kinds, they are getting traffic cleared off the roads, they're getting people alternates. We can do more than one thing at a time and we need to if we're going to have a future we can live with. There are over eight hundred miles of snowmobile trails in the park. There are ten thousand in the state. There are two thousand miles of breaker trails in the Adirondack Reserve. And so only a hundred and nineteen miles of rail that goes right to the heart of the Adirondacks? Is that really such a terrible burden? They're talking about the thirty-two million for the trips. The state just spent thirty-two million building a highway ramp so people can get to Albany Airport and miss two traffic lights. Shouldn't be a break. We need to look at our priorities and where we're putting our money.
Mike Hughes? Mike Hughes? Nelson Robinson? Nelson Robinson?
This is the third one of these I had to. I guess you both have made up your minds. Were there somebody bothering like the King Polo, the Hamilton Governor? And Colin says, I don't like the first one. And we came back the second time because it changed again. So I'm in favor of rails all the way because it wasn't an answer plan. Corridor may not be as, uh, how shall I say, used as like ATV or snowmobiles. But the cool colors there, and, um, I believe home runs around the state. Now, when you, old forms of people that live along the line, what do you think they're going to say? They don't use the railroad. They live along it. They use their cars, their, um, snowmobiles, their ATVs. You should be going to Albany, Syracuse, Rochester, Buffalo, Maynardton, New York City. These are the people who come up here and get our tourists. We live here, we're not tourists. Especially the people who are clapping here. They live there. So of course they want the rails torn up. More torn up, the better.
Tim Trent?
Yes. I am Tim Trent. Good evening. The Railway Travel Corridor between Lake Placid and Utica is an important regional and New York State asset. I think we all agree on that. Corridor rail tracks should be preserved, improved, and used more, not be removed. Linking Lake Placid to, by the rail, to Amtrak in Utica could have huge tourism and economic benefits. Lake Placid's Olympic reputation makes it a major international tourist destination. People from Africa and around the world could use Amtrak and the Adirondack Seating Railroad as a dependable and environmentally friendly way to visit Lake Placid and the entire surrounding railway travel corridor. The Adirondack Seating Railroad has shown that it is viable and has the capacity and reliability to fulfill commitments it has made. An example, the Adirondack Seating Railroad has run very popular Polar Express holiday trains for many years. I'm told that in just four weekends, four weekends this year, it already has attracted twenty-six thousand paid adult and child riders. Railroads like the Adirondack Seating Railroad are forces for vibrant regional tourism and economic prosperity all across the United States. It should be between Utica and Lake Placid. Railway tracks torn up and removed anywhere between Lake Placid and Utica will be gone forever, diminishing the surrounding region and New York State as a result. Also, thank you.
Jamie Farland? Jamie Farland?
Good evening, everybody. I think along the line shoot me because I was the one that started the little piece of paper. From a piece of paper, I got these people to come from Montreal to Buffalo to Boston to Saratoga to Thundera. So if you want to help me, I was the one that did it and I'm very proud that I did it. I got many people to do this on volunteer organization. The reason we started this railroad back when Harry was there, ninety-two, ninety-three, and I do have the booklet here.
Right here.
Ninety-one, ninety-two, this is what all our plans were. We were only going to have twelve thousand people up in Thundera. Then we came down here and then we finally got, hopefully we can go to Lake Placid. There's many things that we can do for the railroad. We have private cars. I know Vern Fahrenheit, my friends around the United States and Canada would love to come down here to Lake Placid from Utica to go up there for their private railroad cars. They will bring their chefs, they will bring everything else that they have to come with them and they will bring, I mean, big money. And people have to have fuel and everything like that. The restaurants in Old Forge, when we went, when we went up to there, Garrett, were full. Molly had her, um, the boat was full at one o'clock when we brought up our people. Uh, let's see. And I was up in there in Lake Placid and I tried to get a deal so that we could go down to Serenac, do things there. We had a pure light train. There's a lot of things we can do out there. We can bring skaters from Utica, from New York, where that gentleman, from New York. When they come on there and they'll spend money here. One minute past, okay, as usual. Uh, we had blind people on the train. We've had, again, we've had dumb people. People can go with their whole families on this train. We've had large people that go on the train. We've had weddings on the train. We've had bikes on the train. We've had canoes on the train. I think we've got a lot of things that we've helped out there in Old Forge. And that's all I can read on my old soul grave. And please, if you want to show me, please do because I love the railroad. My children love the railroad and my daughter helped me when we did the Polar Express. We couldn't get anybody to ride on it the first year. I had to deal with tickets for people to ride on this. Now it's coming here, the hotels are full. You can get, they'll come here and they're jammed. Now, do you imagine people coming to this area to Utica, New York, and they can do the same thing up at Lake Placid? And we can get some Canadian travelers to come here. There's a lot of things we can do, but I don't want to rip up the tracks. We're too hard on this.
Good evening. My name's Bill Broad and I am a property owner in Beaver River. I'm here on behalf of the Beaver River Property Owners Association, which is, uh, a group of, uh, people who own property up there seasonally. I'm submitting a letter tonight to John Schmidt, who, uh, we sent this register, but I'm going to hand it to him also. Two things, we are reaffirming our position to be sent a letter in the draft unit management plan October seventh where we support the rails trails. And specifically in this letter, I want to also oppose the idea of a rail signing in Beaver River, which we think is a hugely inappropriate, uh, football field-sized, uh, structure in the center of our town. That would be a huge impediment to, uh, traffic and movement of people. It's a safety hazard. The, uh, plan also says it should be lighted at twenty-four seven. Well, Beaver River is off the grid and so lighting it twenty-four seven will be a challenge. We also don't think that's an appropriate thing because we have some of the best stargazing in, in the Adirondacks and we don't want the constant light pollution in Beaver River. So on a personal note, uh, I access my property in Beaver River about seven months a year because we can't, so snowmobiles are on rails at different times. Uh, and when the, once the flow freezes over and we can't boat in, our property is inaccessible. We, we feel, my family feels the trail would give us the opportunity to access our property all, all the time, different times of the year and with different modes of transportation. So, uh, personally, I'm in favor of a trail and, uh, on behalf of the property owners, uh, we also feel that.
Good evening. What I have here, property that we are dealing out is the original, the original unit management plan developed for the Adirondack Seating Railroad, Adirondack Seating Preservation Study. I'll leave this on for review. It was put together by Senior Forest Ranger David B. Gray, who was early as well in our operation on the Adirondack Seating Railroad and the Centennial Railroad. He and his wife also wrote many of the songs and strategies, day-to-day operations of the volunteers, what we did on the railroad. And while I understand we're there to help promote the railroad. So I'm going to have to like, like, um, review what this here is. And it's something telling me somewhere in this here, where is option number seven? I've had twenty-five years building everything under the sun at the Adirondack Seating Railroad, Adirondack Seating Preservation Study. And this operation is known in all through the United States. We are number three of the tourist railroads out there in recognition. The Grand Canyon, you're sitting here, Grand Canyon, Cuyahoga Valley, and we're number three. Grand Canyon takes over a million passengers a year. Adirondack Seating, we have just taken over a million. We are well-recognized to tear up this here track between the whole entire, the entire length of this corridor all the way to Lake Placid is a mistake to tear it up from Tupper Lake to Serenac to Lake Placid. It is a mistake. We have advocated from day one, Adirondack Centennial Railroad, Adirondack Railway Preservation. It is a multi-recreation corridor for everybody to use. And we have engineering work that has already been done and it shows where your trails that intersect where you don't have to take up the track. They've actually found a long railroad right-of-way and they're going to intersect it with the railroad. So we cannot tear up this system and put it back. Please take a moment to view the original unit management plan up here for you. Thank you for your time.
I didn't even think, I can talk all about this. I always start out just like, I apologize. I had two seizures, so I lost a lot of my memories. I don't ever remember riding the snowmobile road and what, I don't ever remember taking a train anywhere, okay? What I do know is I've been to, uh, I think one off north there, uh, not the far, yeah, the farthest one up north there?
Lake Placid.
No, not Lake Placid, the other one there, there. Tupper Lake, Tupper Lake, okay? And then last recently, I just want to say, uh, Old Ford there, okay? Both of them, okay? I've got that all down with me, okay? Both of the, uh, the ones up north shared that they don't want. The snowmobile brought more, okay? They had no jobs in the summertime. Uh, they, they needed jobs in the winter time and the snowmobile brought more jobs, okay? Now, this before here, down this way, okay? Because I live in this area, okay? Matter of fact, I live, okay, from here to the front of the building here, Tennessee Street, from them where the tracks go by, okay? So, and I don't know, maybe three times that distance from them, from some people, okay? Now, what I'm beginning to add, people, okay, is this has always been promoted by great economic movements going on, okay? Now, I've yet to see in all these years, my taxes go down, okay? There was, there was a restaurant in, in, uh, Village Remsen. It's up for sale. Somebody wants to buy it, okay? And I believe that when they had one of the dining, uh, trains go up there, that was providing the food for, for it. Uh, one of the legs of, and the fact Tony Legosler owned the restaurant. And so I, I don't know why he couldn't make it open, okay? Now, uh, next thing too is, okay? If the, if the state's going to pay for this, you know, uh, we've got a lot of money for to put these, the two things, okay? Nothing comes from nothing, okay? Nothing comes from nothing, okay? If we're going to double this up, okay? Put the two things together, okay? It's going to, it's going to cost a lot of money. The last thing I heard on the news was the state has sixty bill, sixty billion dollars in debt, okay? I think I know where the money's going to come from. It's going to come from the educational department because every school, school is saying that, you know, the state ain't giving us our money, okay? So, that's the only thing I can think of, okay? So, it's, I took my money up this summer on the thing. I want to, I want to, but ask what? Sorry, sir, you don't have enough money there for a minute split. Okay, we can afford to put both of them together. So you got to decide which one is the most, you're going to serve the, be best for the people, okay? Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody.
Does it come and get the sales tax from us to get some of that revenue? That's what I was wondering.
We could talk to. That hole in the glasses could tell me.
When I learned what plans to put railroad signs by a woman, it just made no sense. And I do, in, uh, in Baltimore, I know Sid Beal, sir, but he did not do it in Baltimore. And I couldn't find anybody that thought it made sense to make rail.
Okay. I'm still recording. It's been a whole, this is why I gotta get it right.
Uh, playing the rules of rails around Lake Placid makes sense to put a trail in, um, to suggest that if you forget the rail from Remsen, not the label, to be liable without a destination of Lake Placid, it really makes no sense. of Lake Placid, really makes no sense. I mean, Pumper Lake's a wonderful little town, and I've enjoyed it, but I can't imagine taking a train to Pumper Lake, it's something that's going to have much economic viability. So I hear a lot of talk about a compromise, and that's how we as communities operate. I hear a lot of support from the Florida Express, which sounds great, and so leaving the rails in from, you know, the, maybe that is a good compromise, but taking the rails out from Fender all the way up, makes a lot of sense. And, you know, I think that adding horses to the trail makes a lot of sense. I think that the trail from, Fender, all of Lake Placid would get a tremendous amount of use. What rail passengers going to patronize favors? What rail passenger is gonna patronize any business that's more than a quarter mile off the trail, off the rail? So, what rail passenger is gonna patronize a business that they pass while they're on a train? Some train doesn't stop for it. But, all of those businesses will benefit from snowmobileers who can pull off and stop anywhere they want, they can take side trails, people on bicycles and e-bikes can pull off and sit on side trails and patronize other businesses, hikers of course don't mind walking to patronize businesses, and frankly, I heard something, somebody comment that hikers don't really like the long flat trails. Well look around, look at the Erie Canal now, look at the trail along 840 in Utica, it is loaded with people walking on flat trails, riding bicycles on flat trails. So, I don't believe that if it doesn't have, have a mountain, that it isn't gonna attract a hiker. So I'm full support, along with my brother, the Beaver Property Owners Association, let's halt the trails, or rails from Fender, all of Lake Placid, and if they wanna keep the rest of them fine.
Steve Edick?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Steve Edick, and I wanted to just give you a little perspective of my experiences in Beaver River. My grandfather bought a camp up there in 1938. My father's been going out there his whole life, I've been going my whole life, and I'm old enough to remember riding the rails in, the passenger train in the 60s. I remember working for the railroad before the Olympics summers in 78, 79. I also, I'm giving you this perspective because I know a little bit about railroads and rails. When I was my manager of a facility in Central Falls, New York, we owned a half mile of track, a siding, that we, I'd also used 30 railcars. So it was important to me to have the rail service. And the FRA came in, told me my siding was, it couldn't meet the inspection standards, so it would cost me $110 per tie to fix, $110 ties, so it was like 10 grand just to do a half mile, just some ties. So it was, my perspective is, oh, and by the way, I was helping the Felix Railroad, I went to a public meeting like this to support the rail service in that area. So I liked the railroad, but in Beaver River, it doesn't make sense. I looked at the condition of the rails right now, hadn't worked on those, I was this crew guy, so 20 miles of track was under our responsibility, I know what I'm looking at and what it's gonna take to fix that, it doesn't make sense. So I liked the railroad, I liked the Polar Express from Utica to Fender, that's great. But above that, people are going to, I believe in giving people a safe alternative, and I especially, now, tangent now, I really don't like the platforms that are being proposed. Personally, my camp is directly across from Ridge Walk, and that platform will be right in my front yard, and it's going to be a huge safety issue, because people are gonna have to foil around each end just to get across the tracks. So my position is, don't need rails in Beaver River, and I especially don't want a platform.
Peter Gores, quite a, Richard said, 46 years on the river, probably two people I know, and a couple of friends of mine, we agree to disagree on this. Probably one of the things happened, and Senator Sears, we had a meeting here, and he wanted me to, and he said, you don't mind people with DOT, not the D E C, because you know, lose your recreational trail, and you're gonna lose your snowmobile trail. I hopefully it's not right now, it's gonna happen that way, because to be honest, I'm a snowmobileer too, but first, what paid my freight, based my retirement on railroad, I've been doing it all my life, and it's not the same railroad, all the track, all the way through Utica, right through to Lake Placid. And one of the things I never really talked about is maintenance. And well, I did talk about it, somebody, gentlemen mentioned all the washouts and stuff like that. Maintaining this railroad is unbelievable. Over the last probably 25 years, you take out about, I believe about 2,000, 2,500 beavers, thousands of beaver dams. This is not easy maintenance. When I was General Manager at Adirondack Seafarero, we signed off on the state, and my committee to look for a multiple use, because you remember the original plan to tack all for multiple use, except if possible, I don't know, refurbish, we signed off on it. We signed off on it because they wanted to build a trail next to our tracks, across our tracks from Serenac to Lake Placid. Now, I don't know how many years that's been going for, Archie McCauley, who is not here right now, kind of led the charge there, stopped it. But we've always, our Adirondack Seafarero Preservation Society has always believed in joint use. Yes, maintaining a railroad is expensive, maintaining a corridor is just as expensive, whether it's got tracks on it or not, that place out there is a bear. Very hard, and I guarantee you, there's not too many people here that want to work there in August, in July, or in June, getting bit to death by the bugs. It's terrible, that maintenance to work up there, one of our seasoned super captains, David M. Pelton, did it for years and years and years, but we were understaffed, and we know it. This railroad should have been completed in 2005, that's what the state told us, to us to go up to Lake Placid and take, to hold, to hold the fort until they got the rest of the railroad. That never happened, should have happened. The bridges south of Fender should have been fixed, and snowmobiles get all the way from Remson to Fender. There was also supposed to be a trail, but to Beaver River, you're allowed to be from Beaver, complain about that. There was supposed to be a trail that went into your place in the sideways, never happened. And a lot of things were promised to us by the state, for all of us, have not happened. I think to revisit the first plan, and I think we have to get the money, so they thoroughly work for everybody, and I think we all sit down and try and find a way to make it work. If we're gonna have spots, we can get over this, get over the smaller ones. But I believe, in my opinion, for all these years, obviously, I wanna see the railroad to Lake Placid, I can't sell tickets to Pumper Lake, it's gotta be Lake Placid, it's world renowned, thank you.
Tourism is the gospel preached by all the relevant New York State politicians, up to and including the governor. Lake Placid is the only upstate New York town with a worldwide reputation. Keeping the rails is the only way to attract all the rich super rail fans from around the world. Why throw that away? Share is the easy and obvious way to go. True multi-use. Peter, I don't remember if he actually used the word share, but he used the concept. I'm not sure I heard that word or concept any other time this evening, it's so obvious. Anyone who thinks that train noise is a nuisance, has not been subjected to the continuous din of snowmobiles, all day and all evening and all night, until 2:00 in the morning. It's horrible, so much for enjoying the quiet beauty of the winter. And to do multi-use of snowmobile and foot travel, ski, snowshoe, just doesn't work. Snowmobileers whiten out the foot trails, and they pollute the atmosphere with their stink and noise. Yes, the bars and restaurants profit, but that's it. And what tourism benefited, snowmobiles bring to the Mohawk Valley, or the Hudson Valley, or any other gateway areas. These are beautiful and historic areas that world travelers will spend their tourist money exploring and enjoying. And what's your plan for evacuation of the North Country in the event of natural or man-made disaster to the major highway system? Have you looked at the consequences of just one automobile accident on this system? Hundreds of people, steps for attack. And then, what I've been trying to ask you, I've also, this is my stuff, I've been authorized to speak for another group. So. It won't be, I guess it would be in a presentation, yeah? Okay, so let me finish off. And, the, the, um, the pollution of the snowmobiles is very real, and the governor has signed the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. How does that fit in with snowmobiles going through all this pristine country? They want a carter, they want to be able to open up these wonderful new machines to that full 100 mile an hour speed. Isn't that divine?
Mark Lillings?
I'm from Manay County, like I've said all of my life, and I wanted to raise, can you hear me? I just like to raise some questions about open meetings. I've been trying to keep up with what meetings were scheduled on this issue, and going to the Department of Environmental Conservation website, last week I saw that there were, we had the meetings in Remson, uh, three meetings last week, or four, depending on, looks like four, because there were meetings listed on Wednesday, but it's maybe just a double listing, I'm not sure. But the square I have here, the black square, is for today.
No time.
Nothing listed for a Utica meeting. And I've found this to be the case over the years, that I have a hard time finding information about meetings on the rail corridor in this area. Utica is just as important, if not possibly more important, the location.
May I?
Yes.
One moment. I would like to take that, if you don't mind, and we can figure out how and why that happened. But, did you have a comment to put into the public record on the issue?
I'll add that I did send an email last week to Mr. Schmidt, that there was no meeting listed on his calendar, this is printed out from today's website.
Okay.
The time wasn't posted either, for tonight's meeting.
Yeah, it's a blank square. The comment is, we need to comply with open meeting law, and I don't know that this is, it makes me wonder how much compliance we are. As well today, I'm not sure what the official publications are, but today's Adirondack Philly Enterprise listed, today's article, listed the meetings last week, from Lake Placid, Lake Placid, no forge, no mention again of a meeting being held in Utica. Where's, where, how are we complying with open meeting? And compliance with open meeting law is important, because it can have an effect on this whole issue, of what, how we, we may need to keep just carrying on, because we don't comply. And I'm supportive, keeping the rails, the, the Fender, turning them down, you don't get a ban.
The time wasn't posted. The time is not posted.
Yeah. For business, we served on a number of boards over the region here, and in the Adirondacks. And I really started out writing something about the merits and flaws of this plan. But the more I got into it, I chose to speak to the unmedicated arrogance of the agencies and individuals behind this shameless ringwork of the 2016 UMP, that was the subject of the lawsuit brought by the Adirondack Railway Preservation Society. I've got just a few lines out of the 26-page decision that the state lost. First, the UMP cannot amend the master plan, and the parties do not dispute the definition of the Remson Lake Placid traffic corridor in the master plan. Transforming Segment 2 into a recreational trail removes it from the definition of the trail corridor. The court rejects the respondents, that's the state agencies, the court rejects their self-serving conclusion, the destruction and removal of the railroad line can only be seen as a reclassification of the 32-mile Segment 2. Simply stating that a new trail used for Segment 2 remains part of the corridor for automobiles, highways, or rails and trains, it's not merely a trail, it's not rational. The effect of the transformation adds 34 more miles to the thousands of trail miles already extant in the Adirondack Park. The rationalization, these are the judge's words, the rationalization by the ordinance of the state, that a multi-recreational use trail is qualified for continuation, as the travel corridor is not based in reason, it defies common sense. The court rejects this contention, it's irrational, and hence arbitrary and vicious. The state chose not to appeal this decision. Instead, it chose to subvert it by changing the definition of travel corridor to mean exactly what the judge said is not based in reason. It held hearings and took comments on this change, and the public response was overwhelmingly opposed to changing it by two to one. And I know this because I FOIA'd the comments and read every single one, two to one against this change. There is a proposal out there to enact the 1996 UMP, it was developed and presented by Trails with Rails Action, it offers a way to have rails and trails, but it didn't meet the demands of special interests. We've all heard too much about the abuse of power in recent weeks. We don't need to look any farther than Ray Group and Alp to see it firsthand.
And Rob?
Be quick, I'm gonna use the word share, if you add in the 25 or so miles from here to the Uta Station, where the, where the Seafarero starts, to Remson, and then you add into other 119 miles, if you truly share the railroad, the Seafarero is still gonna continue to run to Napo Station, no one is proposing to pull that and shut down the railroad. So if I keep repeating that, that lie, it's not, it's not. So, if I keep repeating that, that lie, it's not, it's not accurate. Um, some rule. Number two, several people have cited the numbers for the Polar Express, it's a great, a great asset that this area has. To be able to, to roam and bring people into Atlantic County, that's a great asset. People don't know how many miles that goes on the state-owned corridor. Zero. Zero. And a comment was made about, and I don't really wanna berate the Anorak Railroad, because like you said, they do bring great, I mean, a great asset to Atlantic County. But to say there are number three of the scenic railroads in the United States, I looked it up. There is a number three in New York. It's the Amtrak Anorak Railroad, scenic railroad that runs from New York City to Montreal. On the top twenty-five list is not the other scenic railroad in New York. The rails need to go between Big Moose Station and Lake Placid to rebuild the Anorak communities that are dying a slow death. The businesses are gone. So, it's our problem.
Out of respect for everyone's time, we are finished with the initial sign-up sheet, but we have, one person wants to make a comment separate to another organization. They promised one minute.
Thank you. I made a few points before, it's been a lot of times saying that I was a pro railroad person and a fan. But there are several things that we said tonight that I think are critical to bring up, because the media and the public, the newspapers don't say these things. But these are actual statements made by pro-rail people and former rail people here. The railroad says they have to be allowed to keep these rails all the way to Lake Placid, otherwise the travel corridor does not exist. That is absolutely not true. They've also said for two years that if they provided, they being the town of Old Forge, a shuttle bus from Fendera into town, then the people that they're bringing to Fendera on their trainings only to be at the Anorak, they also be able to go and shop in the stores. The town did this for two years. The railroad reneged on their promise to pay for that service. So, they're not bringing revenue into the communities. As Tal said, people don't go off the tracks. We know what their dreams are, to reimagine Tupper as a jump-off point is ludicrous to spend thirty million dollars for a track for so many, nobody wants to go there, not to go to Lake Placid. It's ridiculous. They talk about the ramp they put in Albany, that's good. They should fix the Route Twelve arterial so ninety and twelve connect instead of dumping everybody out on the Genesee Street. That would be a good use of thirty million dollars, don't you agree, folks? So, finally, the residents of the community don't want it, the taxpayers don't wanna pay for it, snowmobilers do their own work, we volunteer, we fix our trails, we pay our own way. We're not asking for millions of dollars or even hundreds of thousands of dollars. We pay our own way. I'm glad, I'm glad that you're one. Talk to the other seventeen million in the counties. Thank you, folks.
Previously was my personal favorite. This one, I've been authorized by the American Association of Private Railroad Car Owners to say that they absolutely support keeping the tracks as far as possible. Private cars, as Dave talked about, bring tourists with great economic benefits. They will buy stuff in the community, they will, they will eat in the community and/or buy provisions for their people to cook. Um, and so, one railcar brings a number of people who will spend tourist dollars very adequately. Um, and they are having a convention in Burlington for one in nine months, the way they did in twenty seventeen, and that resulted, in twenty seventeen, that resulted in a private car excursion from Utica to Big Moose as far as they could go. They had like fifteen or twenty private cars, and I wasn't there, but I hear it was pretty spectacular, and they certainly spent their tourist dollars where they go. I've also been, I've also been authorized to speak for the Empire State Passenger Association, which has been part of this battle for years, and, um, they support all the goals that the rail people have been talking about, and I will be submitting written documentation, as will the Private Car Owners Association.
Okay, that does the previous speaker come to the panel? And we will wrap up.
Comments are gonna be taken. There's the address, there's the email.